I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order now at 6:03 PM. Does anybody have any additions to the agenda? No, hearing none. Uh, it does not look like there's anyone from the public who wishes to address us tonight, but we'll just check with Gary. Anybody in the waiting room?
No one's in the waiting room.
All right, moving on. No new business tonight, hopping into old business. And we're just gonna breeze through many of these. Um, agricultural resources, Rosemary, I'm not sure if you saw, but I did just finish-
Yeah, I thought you just wrapped some stuff up. Thank you so much. That's great. Thank you.
So that's all set. Just to update everybody, none of the recommendations changed that we had discussed and approved. It was just like some formatting.
You added some stuff with like pollinator pathways maybe or something, just a little more-
Yeah, you had bullet headed out and I just put it in full sentences.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
No problem. Coastal Resources is all set, Historic Resources is all set, Natural Resources is all set. Open space. I am going to share my screen. If that is good with everybody. This was a true team effort, open space.
Yeah, very much so.
I think all of us touched it at some point. But we're in a good spot.
Awesome.
Okay. Gary, you wanna walk us through this?
I certainly can.
Great. I am trying to, there we go. My computer wants to go slow. It's still thinking. Um-
Might as well model, right? We, this start, this section starts off with the goal, the primer, the premise of the whole section. Yeah, we highlight the importance of open space. Last paragraph here, I think wraps it up as far as, you know, the approach. Um, and we, we identify the two different plans. We, we touch on them, the types of open space, conservation, recreation, and then of course institutional, and then ag. Uh, so while ag is a, not, I don't know, I was thinking, well, ag is a economic engine here, you know, it's also open space. So it's kinda like it's a dual purpose. I don't know if we should just kinda reflect on that, but, um, but anyway, the plans for East Lime, here are the, this is the meat and potatoes of the whole section. It's basically the two plans from the Natural Resources Commission and the Land of Unique Values study. There's the map.
Note here.
Kirk made this note.
Oh, yeah, I, you know what, I see what he was saying, but I think it belongs here. This open space plan is based on aquifer protection, whereas the other open space plants have other, um-
Other driving factors behind it, right?
Exactly.
And I think that, I mean, I think collectively it's a good approach, cuz you're not always gonna get parcels and fee simple. You know, Eric can buy it, right?
Um- So I think that's okay to resolve, but we can come back.
Okay.
Maps.
These are the watershed maps, the same figures as in the previous iteration of the P O C D. This table two, I'm currently working on that. I have to update that to reflect that the Darryl Pond piece was purchased. Um, and I think there were some other acquisitions, maybe they'll even, the land trust may have purchased, would take them off of this list.
And some have been developed, right? Did we already get those offered? That will be part of the update too.
Gotta be part of the update. So thi- this hasn't been updated since they published their first document.
I have a question on this sheet.
Yes.
Um, maybe it just needs updating, but, um, there's some, uh, some of these listed with people's names on it. One is checked, uh, let's say Huber, for example.
Gotcha.
Is that, that was-
That was purchased.
Okay, all right. Now, there's some that haven't been purchased, but with somebody's name on it. Uh, it says agriculture. That's- That just means it's a farm, has open space. So this includes small farms, then, is the sheet?
It, I, I believe it would, it would, it would include some of those tracts of land. So if, Michelle, if you scrolled up to the, uh, open space plan, this correlates, each one of these is highlighted in yellow, one more page. So they all correlate, that they're, the numbers in this Excel spreadsheet correlate to the numbers on this map. So it identifies, so if you scroll up just a little bit more, Michelle, you'll see the north end of town, these large tracts, which I think are our, most of our farms. Now, I, I did question, and this is where, when they update the open space plan, I asked Art if, you know, there's some large tracks, such as the one off of Holmes Road, that was slated for the multi-family development and golf course there. And I said, that's in the, the Latimer Brook watershed, so if, right, I believe that's Latimer Brook. So if we're looking at, you know, improving Latimer Brook and making recommendations in the plan, why not, you know, suggest some of those large tracts being sought after as open space? So I think that's something that the, their commission's gonna contemplate.
Now, the, in the yellow, it says proposed open space.
Yes, these would be parcels that if the town had the ability to acquire outright, um, that would be the desirable acquisition.
So those are the same as listed in the schedule as being agricultural?
Uh, no, they, they should be, I mean, there, there would just be notes here of what the parcel is. I mean, I, if there was a note that it said it was agricultural, it may have an agricultural value to it. So i- if they had a farm, or they had some sort of crop that they were producing, then the little box got checked X.
Can someone make it a little bigger, if that's okay? I'm, I am really, uh, can't see.
I am trying to do that now.
Yeah, sorry.
And this is also, if anybody has with them, the 2009 printout, it's the same sheet in there. You know what I was wondering though?
Ruth and I had our faces about this far.
Oh, yeah.
Is this better?
Oh, I haven't, I haven't.
That's great.
You know, Gary, if we're updating it though, I just had this thought as Norm was asking about the names. Maybe for purposes of, while all of, while ownership of this land is public information, maybe for purposes of keeping the document up to date and giving people a little privacy, we take out the owners' names.
The notes.
Yeah, I mean, this column-
It's not needed, we have the address.
Yeah.
That would be-
What, what I'm thinking here is that in regards to affordable housing, one of the few legitimate reasons, or legal reasons that a town can deny affordable housing is that the land has been proposed for open space. So keeping that in mind, we should, if in fact, these, these in the yellow are proposed, that means an awful lot of part of the town can be denied possibly affordable housing. So you know what I'm saying, Gary?
Yeah, um, I guess, well, I mean, that, that's not, I mean, wasn't the intent to do that per se, like curb it, but at the same time, I mean, this was, the, the approach here was really a watershed development approach, and how to best protect our water resources. I guess if you look at the map, yeah, I mean, and, and if they update their plan to include more land, um-
If we're, if we're gonna call it proposed for open space, we better make it real clear so the zoning board has a leg to stand on when it comes to, if they wanna deny it for, for that reason. You know?
Certainly, um-
I think that makes sense to make it clear that is, you know, if it truly is proposed for open space. Um, ha- has that been the historic, like, intent of this document? Like, have we run into a circumstance where one of these parcels has been proposed?
Yeah, well, with Oswegachi Hills.
Well, yeah, okay, that'll, yeah.
That was a big factor in that it has been proposed definitely, and discussed in all kinds of minutes since the 60s.
Yeah.
Right.
And even in section, we, we even highlight a special, kind of big special note to it.
Yeah.
So maybe we should, yeah, make that even more clear in this doc, document. You know, maybe in the foot, the footnote, or the figure, you know, beneath that, just all of these are-
I mean, they, the, without, I mean, obviously, the, the open space plan as proposed by the Natural Resource Commission is an appendix to this document. Uh, and that document was obviously approved by their commission, and, um, I, I think the, accepted by the Board of Selectment. I'm not sure how that, that went, but, uh, under statute, that, that commission is charged with inventorying the open space in town and keeping track of it, so that's what they've done and furnished that report to the Board of Selectment, and, um, I think there's some, in the beginning of the report, there's some correspondence there that's, looks very official-like, if you will.
I think we've got to, uh, have a section here. And, uh, see, if we have all of these, we got like 50 of them, however many, proposed for open space, that is kinda, a judge in the courtroom, when the thing is appealed, is gonna look at, says, everything's proposed for open space. This doesn't mean anything, so I think we've gotta take those ones that the town really is targeting and mention them specifically as targeted to be purchased for perpetual open space.
Does, does the ranking system not do that? Because these are in priority order.
I think that it does. I also think another thing that could be done to, to your point, um, Norm, would perhaps maybe show the percentage of the town that is proposed as open space versus other space. Cuz then if a judge were looking at it and were like, oh, well, only 8% of the town is proposed as open space. I know, like, this does look like a big list, but if we are more explicit, then maybe that can also overcome that, um, concern, which I think is legitimate that you've made, but maybe you can show percentages or something that makes it a little bit more, um, clear.
That's a good idea, too.
Yeah, it's, we just, we just need to specify those parcels that should fall into this category of protection.
And they- Oh, go ahead, Rose.
They're all different size, too, like, 7.5 acres is one of them, like, that is, you know, that is quite small. So I think, I don't know, it looks like a lot of parcels, but they really-
See the totals. So it's just over 3,000 acres, but some of the, some of it's already off the table, as no longer available or already preserved. But what my concern is, is we address in this chapter three separate open space plans, this being the primary one, but others also being addressed for their value. So it's this master table from the Natural Resources Commission. Then we have the open space recommendations from the Lands of Unique Values study. Then we also have open space recommendations from the Niatic River Watershed Protection Plan, and elsewhere in the document, under Coastal Resources, we have open space recommendations from the StanTech Resiliency, um, study. So, um-
Maybe there's a way to combine them and just make this a little bit more streamlined, cuz I imagine that there's overlap.
I had the same thoughts too this morning when I was reading it. I started to look for a single thread that went all the way through this, but I kept getting like jostled back and forth by the fact that we're switching from one open space plan to the other. So I kinda agree with, uh, the idea we should can, combine everything a little more seamlessly, and, uh-
We could easily do that in GIS, too, like, if we just use, you know, overlay the shape files and then just show which ones overlap. Like, we could, in theory, very easily come up with a map that merges all the-
A very busy map.
Yeah, well, well, we, we definitely could have a list, it just won't be a ranked list like this one, with exception of Oswegachi Hills, which comes up in nearly every single open space. It, in all four, all four documents that recommend open space recommend Oswegachi Hills, but, um, we, and we would lose the ranking system. I don't know if that's important or not.
I think there should be a page that lists each one that the town is proposing, that this plan is proposing for future open space.
Okay.
To be purchased at some point.
That'll certainly make this chapter easier to read, and likely then more effective. We could use the upfront to discuss the sources of how we determined the list, and then combine this list, Lands of Unique Value, Niatic River Watershed Parcels, and StanTech into one master list.
Yeah, we need a leg to stand on in court.
Looking at the, um, total area, too, so it's like 3,264 for the open space, and then in East Lime, there's 26,880 acres, so that, um, shakes out to roughly 12%, just for reference.
Oh, well, and that's good, too, because the governor wants us to maintain 20, right? Or the green plan?
Yeah, so we're under that amount.
Write down all those numbers. Those numbers keep going there.
Sorry, um, Michelle, do you want me to hop in there and write a few notes in the margins, or do you wanna do that, or?
Oh, yeah, um, can you hop in?
Yeah, sure.
Or I can, so everyone can see it.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's true. So I'll just, um, you know, the 3,264.15, and then the total-
Well, that number's gonna be wrong anyway, because-
Cuz some's been purchased or whatnot, or developed. And then for East Lime, I just did a Google search, it's, yeah, 26,880 acres, 26,880. And then, um, that, um, is roughly 12.14%. And yeah, you said the green plan wants, um, 20%, so-
Which we might have referenced that already.
Yeah, but that, that's good, though, to think about that, too, and reference that specifically in the document. So if we do end up combining some of these parcels, combining some of these maps, and maybe we could still rank it, but be like, we are under the amount that the governor orders, and then you can use that in zoning as well. I feel like that's super legitimate.
Gary, you look like you're thinking.
Yeah, well, I was just comment, uh, thinking about where we are currently with our percentages. I think it's at 17% is the current percentage of town that's, that's open space. So it, I guess the difference that Rosemary just calculated would bring us well over 20.
Does that include, is that 17 permanently protected, or does that include Yale and the prison?
That, no, it does not include the institutional land. I think if you go back to the open space plan, it shows the percentages.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at the vision, which lands us at 30.
I think we should take the, our favorite numbers out of each one of the three, and carry them.
Open space increased, and so it, really, it's about 18% right now.
Okay.
It's all 30.
This is what it is now.
Correct.
That other one was the vision, Kirk, like, if we bought it all.
I like the vision.
I do, too. Okay.
Is it 20% or 30% for governor green plan? Is it 30?
Hey, did that just lose the screen?
That just lost the screen. Uh, I have, there you go, green plan, there you go.
21.
21, okay.
All right. So, um, we can keep going on this document, um, but I do think that change will improve the section.
I agree.
I agree, too.
Um, Kirk, we were just talking about this one. This paragraph describes how the yellow table was made.
Yeah.
Um, so that's why it's in the section under the Natural Resources Plan.
Got it.
But we could put more about aquifers in the top, cuz you had a good point.
Uh, well, I don't know, I, I, I don't know if it's really necessary if we go there in our other sections.
Okay.
It, it should, suffice to say, we care about the drinking water and the aquifers, and that's one of the reasons why we're doing the open space plan like this. I agree with that. But I think we should try to make this, um, section as clear as possible and plain. I don't, I don't, it, whatever you feel like is the best thing to do that.
So I, I think, I guess, as, in terms of application, right, uh, through like the planning department and zoning, we're gonna look at this as saying, okay, what is, what land is the town looking to preserve as open space? If I can't purchase the parcel or preserve it in its entirety, and it's gonna get developed, then I turn to the Love Study, and I say, if it's gonna get developed, what portion of the land do I build on? And that, that document kinda guides you there. And then, if the land is, happens to be in the Niatic River watershed, well, then I would apply those recommendations to the site as well. So, I mean, that, that's the, how, if, if you can somehow-
Well, it, is it, is, is it that easy to just characterize those three scenarios and put it in here? Because the way you just described it seems like a really clear way of, um, you know-
That's the intent, that the section is, I kinda, I guess drafted the way it is, really to, as Norm was saying, is to have that ability to say, hey, if the parcel is that sensitive, and we're in court, you know, our decision has to be held up, and if we're denying an application because the land is that environmentally sensitive, then I would agree, uh, I want all the, you know, facts that I can have to support that position. So while it is a lengthy section, it's kinda why it's lengthy, at the same time, you know, I agree, it, it's, it's a little cumbersome in its read.
And all of the documents we're referencing will be in the appendix. So I think we can simplify the chapter-
Yes.
While still maintaining the legal necessary backup by having them in the appendix where you can go into much more detail.
I think that's good, and I think it is good to kind of maintain them in as much of their entirety as possible, just to have that-
Say, we can say we support in principle those three studies.
Yep.
And call it, call it, uh, would you, do you think that would give it enough teeth?
We have to name, in my opinion, we have to list specific addresses.
Yeah.
To satisfy the court.
I agree with that for sure, yeah.
So-
There's a lot of really good work in here, and, and all these different studies and everything were really well done, and I just think we should pick, like, the, the, um, ideas out, and like, just put them in a, a little more simple of, of a, um, wording to give it that flow, like, like you guys were saying.
Okay, so that, that's gonna take a little bit of time to probably to read wordsmith.
I can help with that, Gary. Why don't, why don't I put some work into this tonight? And I can even save it as a different file name, so that we don't lose the original. And I can send it to you tomorrow and make sure that it's something you're comfortable with as the primary person who's gonna be, you know, holding up this document.
Yeah, I think, I mean, in terms of, of specific parcels, uh, obviously Oswegachi Hills, um, I think, if you, I know the, the Love Study had pointed out, what was the, I think, just below, uh, north of Oswegachi Hills, I think, as well, that was acquired.
Yeah, that was the one, they came and talked to us when they acquired it, they got a grant, right? And I have all the parcel listings from Niatic River Watershed Protection Plan and the StanTech Plan as well. I can list them out, so they can be added to that spreadsheet as you go to edit the spreadsheet, so that we have a master list.
Okay, and then, if we're all in agreement, that spreadsheet will act as our master list in order of priority, I guess, um, weighted against what, you know, so? Or is it just a list of, here's, we're just gonna create this list of, regardless of priority, that it's just on the list?
I think that's gonna happen.
Do we wanna do that as like a separate workshop kinda thing?
Well, we're kinda running out of time on it.
I know.
Go through the list right now, if you want.
Yeah.
But it's been prioritized already according to the formula, the, the priority list was made with this formula in mind, which the Natural Resources Commission is considering more, giving more weight to the impact to the aquifer, right? So the order of this list ba- is based on the total point score, based on all these things that the open space has, right? But only these parcels are prioritized. The parcels identified in the Love Study, the Niatic River Watershed Protection Plan, and the StanTech Study do not, we do not have this information for them. So if we want one list, it's apples and oranges.
Okay, so the, the thing to do would be to look, I guess, look at the list and those other studies and see where they overlap.
Yep.
Um, and then maybe wherever they overlap, like Rosemary was saying, is those, those are the priority parcels, or those are the, that makes the-
Yeah, well, I, I think we can consider the ranking that is present in this list, and then find the overlap, and then, yeah, I think there's a way to kinda combine things here.
Okay. So that gives me some more direction. What I'll do is I'll, I'll see if I can't just overlay everything and come up with a set of parcels that, and kinda-
As, as long as it's objective, I think that sounds like a really good idea.
Okay, can do.
That's gonna be hard.
It's gonna take a little time, but we can do it. Um, in terms of having this document ready to go to, um, you know, for next week, that's a challenge. Uh, but nonetheless, you know, so I don't know how, how drastically we wanna change the section, but, like you said, these are, are gonna be in the appendices. Uh, and I think, as Norm, if we're just very specific, like Norm said, and just come out and create a list, uh, we can make it now. Obviously, Oswegachi Hills is on the top of that list, along with the Hathaway, uh, road piece. Um, I don't know, you know, where do you draw the line? That's the hard question.
Well, that's the problem with prioritizing the list, even though I want. They're all important for different reasons, and that's why they've all been identified already.
How about if you, I mean, on this list here, you have existing open space? If you, included, if you just eliminate the existing, have that on a separate sheet, and just have a, leave the list of proposed.
Yes, this is the list of proposed.
Oh, wait a minute, we, there's some that are already open space.
Yes, they are, it's just been since 2009.
Yeah, Darryl Pond, I think, and the Samuel Smith property were acquired, the, I, uh, that piece off of, behind Goldfinch Terrace was the other piece, so those four would come off.
Yeah.
And then some other ones have been developed, so they come off as well.
Right.
Yeah, definitely, let's streamline it, I agree for sure.
For, for example, Damon Heights, uh, number 40, 288 Damon Heights Road. That's part of Oswegachi Hills Nature Preserve. That's already preserved. And there's others.
So that, that's, I would, I guess the question there is, I, I do know that the land trust owns a piece of land out in Oswegachi Hills. Um, there's no conservation easement on it. Um, and they had discussions with me, and, um, they wanna pursue the town on doing a land swap uh, with that piece, and an easement on the remaining 100 acres at Darryl Pond. Um, so that, that's kinda in the works, so I don't know, that, that Damon Heights piece, I'm not sure. I would think it's open space, cuz there's a sign up there. I would think it's open space because there's a sign up there. Um. But I'd have to double check with Art on which piece that the land trust holds that has no easement on it.
Can we forward them that, them this list? Maybe they could just help us with, uh, filling in, taking things off, you know?
Yeah, I, I'll give, I'll give article, I can give article tomorrow and just say, I, I know, uh, Michelle. Actually, no, Rosemary sent me an art and email. I don't, I haven't heard from her, whether or not he's looked at this section yet. Um.
I think that's the best place to start.
Is there anybody else in the, in any of those other, what's your, he's with the land trust? Who's, what's the other group?
He's also with natural resources and then.
Heller is quite responsive and, uh.
Who?
Penny Heller, she's pretty on the ball. She might know, uh.
And Pat, um, yeah, Pat Young, um, manages the Niang River watershed. No, I'm sorry. She does Eight Mile. It's Judy Rondo does a Niang River. So I can chalk, talk with her, just verify if there's anything. That's been acquired or, or not. I, I doubt it. I, I would probably would have heard.
They got that one. I don't think it's on this list, though.
I'm sure they have a list of things they're tracking.
So I'll, I'll, why don't we, it's just really, so it sounds like what we really need to do is update this list and then somehow. Kind of meld this all together.
Alright.
Okay.
Definitely. Who can help with that? That's a really big job for one person, Gary. Who have, can someone help you on the Excel side? I mean, I can pull together that list of other parcels that we reference here so that they're all in one way, and I'll format it the same way, but, um.
What I can do is I can bring the Excel spreadsheet and put it in sheets and we can share that.
Okay.
Um, and then, I mean, I, it's just a matter of.
GIS map too, right? And look at the tax records and pull out specific ones that way.
I did that early on and I have a page, I marked up my copy with a bunch of stuff that's like. Ready to come off, so I can scan that.
That's actually really good information. Especially if it's.
I don't know what's been preserved, but I know what's been built on. Um, alright, I guess we should continue to the recommendations, huh? Knowing that the main recommendation is buy all those things. So we'll work on rewording here to simplify why the love study, why the open space plan. Did we want to take this? Update it or take it out?
Okay, that, yeah, up to the, uh, the group here. Um, so really the change would be in residential acreage. Um, and then obviously open space, uh, as far as, you know, commercial, industrial. Institutional, none of that's changed. Um, this is taken primarily from our zoning map. And so it's basically the land area of the zoning district. Um. So you'd only see the change in two places on undeveloped and. And probably residential, because I think all the parcels that were acquired have been residentially zoned pieces.
Is that, are those statistics that you can get really easy out of your mapping tool? Or is this a manual?
This was, I believe these numbers came from the Land of Unique Values study initially. Uh, so they derived them. I don't know how they did that specifically. But I believe, I mean, I could, I could do something very similar, um, and maybe. Itemize it differently with different categories, um.
I could see maybe, uh, the tax somehow through the tax office. There might be an easy way to get this. I've got to have a database of all their prop, all the properties in town. Maybe they should, maybe they could help you.
Their data is, is it certainly helpful in terms of use, um, although it, it doesn't always coincide with zoning. And how that land is actually categorized it. Well, I'll talk to Diane tomorrow and see if I can't maybe get some clarification here. And I mean, it, it's very interesting data. I don't know if it's really applicable to. The whole section or how it benefits us by sharing it here.
I can advocate for updating it if it's easy and removing it if it's not. Because I agree, it's interesting, but I don't think it's. Uh, you know, necessarily necessary to our case for open space.
I don't think it, think it is either. So I'm in favor of scratching it, but.
Scratch it.
Did I hear scratch it from Kirk?
Yeah, yeah, that was me.
Right. Everybody else?
What else? What about Norman, uh, Rich?
Scratching this chart?
Yeah.
It's okay. I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Rosemary, you want to vote, even though it might not count? Because everyone just.
I don't know. I mean, I think maybe if we have something similar to that, I think it is important and good to be able to classify the different types. Of land and be able to see how the percentage of open space compares to other land use types.
Okay.
Those are my two cents.
Long as it's accurate.
Yeah, I just don't know if that's accurate, especially it's from the love study from, uh, you know, many a year ago.
Well, we could take the last one and we know how many open space properties were added since the last time and then.
And maybe it doesn't have to be exactly all of these headings, but if we did residential, commercial, open space. I don't know. I think maybe if it just, something like that appears somewhere, that'd be good. Even if it's not necessarily in the section, maybe if it's in the introduction or somewhere else in the. Report, I just think that's like useful information to put things into context.
I'm going to change my vote.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I'll see if I can't simplify it then and, uh, or, or.
Somebody has these numbers, I'm sure of it. It's just finding the right person to ask.
But we, we have all the, we have the technology. It's just going to take a little time to crank it up. Um. I don't know.
Maybe I'll, I'll try to get with you and see if I can help, Gary.
Alright.
I'll catch up with you, uh, offline tomorrow or tonight.
Okay, because I, yeah, there, there's a couple of different maps. You have, there, there's a land, land cover map that, um. The state puts out, uh, which I think is used in making this. So there's a, there's a couple of steps in this, but. Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll, but we'll come up with a, a table of sorts that kind of shows land use by type. Uh, we already have some of that information in our open space maps. So I think we can get to it pretty quickly if we just break it out, residential, commercial, open space, undeveloped, institutional.
I'm actually in favor of putting that in the, in the introduction. Because then we can also reference it in other sections too. When we talk about slowing residential growth, we can. We can go to, we already, we have a ton of residential space. And when we talk about use commercial space efficiency, efficiently. Then we have that number two to refer back to how little commercial space we have.
In the prior document, we had, uh, there were pie charts in chapter two that had the breakout of land, like the. It didn't, didn't, basically didn't say. And whether it was developed or undeveloped, I don't think it accounted for that.
Well, pie charts are pretty fun to look at and they're easy to understand. No, I'm serious.
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, I think so too. I think.
It does have undeveloped, um.
It does, okay.
Yeah.
Is, is that pie chart reflective of this table?
Residential, industrial, commercial, institutional, transportation and communication. Yeah, uh, for some reason that word struck me as all recreational slash open space and undeveloped.
Okay, so I guess the answer Kirk is I can update that pie chart. But I got to get the information probably from Diane as to what parcels have been preserved. Um, and or, you know, what changes have occurred. I don't think many, but. So there's a little bit of that background work that's going to get to go into updating that. Um.
Could be kind of cool. The undeveloped shows us, well, you know what? And this is as of nineteen ninety-nine. It wasn't updated in two thousand nine.
Flip, flip the page is another one. I think.
Ah, yes.
Includes agriculture.
Two thousand five. But it would be cool to.
And I think there's another one after that.
So you're saying like somewhere in the introduction of the entire document?
Yeah.
Or somewhere higher up in the.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
We, yeah.
Yeah.
Those pie charts are in, in the previous document, they're under the section that discusses all our demographics. So I don't know, like, I mean, just, I guess contextually, where does this belong?
I think we can put it in the introduction because we can talk about how this is, you know. A planning and primarily land use document, and this is how the land is currently being used.
That is a key, key point right there.
Okay, so we're, we'll move, so we'll move this to the intro.
So, um.
And I'll, I'll fact check the data with Diane and try to update that tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, good news and bad news about this pie chart. The source is the love study. So.
I knew it. Um, but I actually think I have, I have the Excel sheet for the chart. Um, I don't know if I can look to see if there's like some sort of formula in the background that. I change one number here and the whole thing updates. I don't know, but something tells me I'm.
Figure it out. I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry too much about it. We'll figure it out. I can, I can help with that.
Alright, alright, thanks Kirk. So I'll work with you on that.
Cool.
Thank you both. It's a lot more math than I signed up for here.
It's just time.
Okay. Looking at the watershed.
So this is our long-term perspective, um. If anybody has any questions with this, and then I think below this are the recommendations. So this is my little, little plug for sustainability. Uh. There it is. Boom, boom. Uh, yeah, at the twenty-one percent. And then. Most of these are, I think, you, I don't know if anybody looked, got a chance to look at them, uh, as Michelle or in. Rosemary worked on this, uh, but preserve, maintain, uncorrupted large tracts of lands, work to link existing open space parcels together. Um, I'm not sure where this one came from. But.
I think this, Rosemary, I think you added it in and I just bolded it.
Yeah, yeah, my students had some ideas about this, which I think I generally agree with. Um. Yeah, just making sure that we preserve places where like the natural land cover can kind of buffer us from. Potential impacts.
And I think that's, that's consistent with the, uh, climate study. Um, the next one, I can't see. Here it is, preserve and continue protection of Osugachi Hills. And then the change here is and the Niang River being added in. Um. I, I reword smith this a little bit, Rosemary, and, um, I hear. I expect his commitment to the preservation of Osugachi Hills has been declared through the years. That, that was a little softer. Um.
I know, I think my students were a little more, uh.
But yeah, they're, I love their enthusiasm. Um. Now, it says, I didn't know how to word this, and I took this out of the love study, the commitment should become official. Um, you know, I think here maybe instead of, this might be where we take the plug for Osugachi Hills and you say, okay. Um. The town's plan is to acquire, you know, open space.
A much clearer way of wording it that's more action oriented, like the town should do this.
Um, right, so maybe, maybe. Turning the, instead of commitment become official, like reword smith that portion to say that. You know, as indicated in this plan. Um. It is.
Make every effort to preserve Osugachi Hills.
Or is the, the town's intent to?
I would say purchase it if that's what we want to do or something, or work with a public private partnership or whatever we in. The town has intended or thinks of, yeah.
Yeah, you could just say.
Be more point blank.
It is the town's intention to preserve Osugachi Hills and open space in perpetuity.
What'd we do without spell check?
And then I don't know if we need the last part of that, but.
Doesn't hurt.
Or, I would say keep it. It gives more specific reason why, even though it's already all over the place, but I would just keep that.
Uh, you, do you like that, Norm? Is that a?
Yeah, I'd, I'd leave it, thank.
Okay, I mean, I think it's, it's strong enough and to the point.
Yeah.
Do I need to italicize it?
Highlight.
Hold.
Quote.
Underlined.
I like, yeah. Highlight, bold, quote, everything. Oh, protect the Latimer Brook watershed is the next, obviously, uh, you know, it's the, in the text. Now, the question is, do we can either keep this text? This is just really background knowledge for these.
See you guys later.
Bye, Rich. Thanks, appreciate it.
Number six, uh, this came out of a discussion Michelle and I had, uh, the day was to establish an open space committee. Uh, trying to bring, because we have a couple of different agencies, boards, commissions, all working toward the same goals. And my thought was, I like the idea of kind of, you know, if you can bring it under one umbrella, you know, there's power in numbers. Uh, when making grant applications and things like that. But at the same time, each one of these is such a niche. Kind of, uh, you know, commission and mission. So, um. I think we, we did pretty good wordsmithing for them. So the recommendation, I don't know who else, if anybody's in favor or not, but. I think a, a subcommittee of sorts would be.
Well, we got so many open space committees as you list here. What about just encourage, uh, periodic. Formal meetings amongst all these groups.
I think that's better.
In an effort towards, uh. Not, um, duplicating efforts or whatever.
I think that's what we were trying to do here. So the, the model I was explaining to Gary was the beach associations. How they all have their own boards, but then like periodically, it might even be quarterly. Each association sends a representative to a larger meeting of all the beach associations. So that they can kind of.
Yeah.
Back in.
I would say maybe say have an annual meeting or have a semi-annual meeting with representatives from each organization. Something like that. I don't know if it's necessarily a subcommittee. I understand what you're saying, but I think maybe it's just, um, amazing.
It's something.
If you form a subcommittee, it'll dissolve in two years.
Okay.
Require annual meetings.
Yes.
Annually, quarterly, biannually?
Biannually, I think it's reasonable.
At least, at least annually.
There you go.
I feel like, I feel like you could take that kind of collaboration statement and say it about all the boards and commissions too.
Yeah.
Well, there already is a annual meeting.
Right.
Uh, it's like a potluck dinner that we have at the community church.
Right.
With all the preservation.
Oh, yeah, I went to that.
It, it's actually already happening.
Okay, that's good.
It's just basically reports, each one gives a report. And, uh. So this already is happening.
Maybe encourage attendance of the, yeah, as, as the, the bold thing, encourage attendance to the annual preservationist.
Yep.
Hotluck or something. Hot lock or something like that. And then boom, and then.
But I think we want to kind of go beyond that to encourage them to work together on parcels that are mutually beneficial, and that might be happening already, but it. It might be good to put it in, because what we were kind of envisioning is like when something when a parcel is available, or when we're trying to get grant funding for a parcel. And we're sending in an application, we want as many organizations on that application as possible for strengthening it, right? And and I don't know if that's naive to think that makes a difference, but like if we want to approach the nature conservancy and we can say six of these groups listed here support purchasing this parcel. Versus, you know, any one of them on their own.
Get rid of that word, subcommittee.
Yeah, got it.
Open space consortium. Of these groups meet at least annually.
I like that.
You've been in this business too long, Gary. You're coming up with these fancy words.
Oh, you gotta.
Did that do it?
Yeah, I think that's great.
Get rid of the word subcommittee and gives them some direction.
Yeah.
Again, continued public private partnerships. Uh, we provide, I I just put this little for example. Uh, the open space watershed fund, we didn't get into listing all different types, but we could. I think that might be more of a recommendation for natural resources to go create a document that says these are all the different funding sources for open space.
Through the grant writer in there too, after we talked yesterday, Gary.
Yeah, that one's not down at the bottom, I think.
I couldn't find it when I went to format the document this morning, so I put it here.
Okay. A partnership, yeah, with the, so we added that as well. I thought I had moved it down. It might be.
It might appear both, and I might have missed it.
Either way, um, but that's something that the town's always talked about. We have in the past kind of pursued it, but never any, no, never solidified anything. And grant writers in particular are niche writers as well. Uh, particularly when it comes to open space, these writers, they're, that's what they do, and that's all they do. Whereas other people focus on education and other niche industries. Moving on, uh, open space acquisition projects as outlined in the Niannic River watershed plan, that's new to this. Planet development, again, opportunities to donate land for open space. Uh, I'm suggesting that the we develop a landowner's guide to conservation options. We have a good, I'm not sure if it was online here, but I do have a resource that Maine put out. And it's a basically a landowner's guide, so I thought maybe we can, you know, piggyback off of something like that. And these last ones come out of the love study. Again, I'm in agreement with them. I don't know if we need to really necessarily list them. And then you'll see that water flows. This was the word that they used. Uh, but I think that that, you know, that what's interesting about this is, you know, it really speaks to protecting the Niannic River, I think, you know, maintaining the riparian buffer. Well, it also seems to also allude to inland wetlands and watercourses as well. Again, I don't know if anybody has any further, I think that's the last recommendation, Michelle.
Think so.
Well, maintain open space corridors, yeah. And then reference.
I didn't know what we needed of the references.
I feel like I I feel similarly about all the sections. I'm like, uh, how many references should we have? Like, do we just want to refer, uh, reference relevant reports or a few key facts? Like, I feel like you could have a list of like thirty references for each chapter if you wanted to.
I've only been referencing things that I specifically mentioned, like support of the Niannic River watershed protection plan that I'm listing now. Anything that I used for general research that I didn't explicitly, you know, state from in the section. I haven't been including, but I could, but I haven't.
I'm guilty of some of those in my sections too. I just put a lot of stuff in there and I put, I need to go back and clean out some of mine.
So plant, so this is like, this, this one was related to the grants.
Where the grants came from.
And I feel like that could just come out, because that's like just news, a thing that happened, right? This, I think we're okay on this because we referenced the whole plan.
Yeah, I think so.
I have not been mentioning referencing the two thousand nine P O C D because to me that was kind of like given.
Number three was, uh, has to do with the examples that were given about, um, the two grants.
Okay.
So that could probably go.
River watershed plan.
Uh, is this one the watershed? Oh, okay. So yeah, so we already have that.
Those are two particles from the day paper about the Dara Fawn thing.
I I think we can delete all that.
And, um, we took out, uh, Glastonbury and Stonington in the, um, uh, like implementation. Only because a lot of our other implementation ones cited like specific tactics. But this just cited, it seemed to cite what just that they planned to conserve. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't look at the Oswego Gachi Hills legal update.
From twenty eighteen.
Yeah, I don't know. Do. I mean, were all of these referenced or?
Does anybody remember putting them in?
I know I didn't.
I may have put a couple of them in there.
I'm sure I threw a whole bunch in there.
Because I was trying to get to the open space plan and I kind of, kind of just like. Yeah.
I'm gonna pull them, because they're mostly articles.
Fine. That's totally fine. I'm, I support you.
All right. And then we also have to put the land of unique values study.
I think this is a much better way of doing this. I think this is good, Michelle.
Okay. I'm gonna come back to this because I never, I have not been naming it correctly. All right. Guys, that's open space. Ready to move on?
Yay.
If you liked that one, you're gonna love economic development.
It's painful. Okay. Here's our goal and policy. That was from the previous document. Background, uh, some of this is still coming out of the previous document. Um, there's a change to the current spending is either mirroring or increasing fashion and current tax revenue. I believe that is relatively accurate. Occasionally requires annual increase of at least a half to one mil. Residential taxpayer bears the increase. We kind of know that already. This is more just introductory to the section and then get right on, keep going down.
Move this up from the bottom. But it's the same paragraph.
So all of, yeah, I see what you highlighted there. Yeah, I didn't. We can delete that.
Oh, okay, take it out.
All right, actually, no, don't take it out.
Yeah.
Because that explains what comes next.
Yeah.
And so what I did is I took the recommendations that came out of the love study and just really highlighted them. So what, what they did is they divided the town into basically eight unique neighborhoods. Flanders, north, east, west, and then Niannic, east, west, north, central, and south. Um, and then I created some descripting, uh, descriptive paragraphs here for north, northern Flanders, Flanders Village. And Niannic Village, uh, I would just go up to northern Flanders. So this was the one where we talked about, this is about, I don't want to say this. Uh, the love study had recommended the north end of Flanders be rezoned as agriculture. And I know we had the discussion at the last couple of meetings ago about that not necessarily being a good idea and Norm's idea about expanding the agricultural type uses. So here, this basically says, hey, this is the the description of the the zone and, but then further down in the recommendations, we tried to, I don't know, we'll, we'll get there if you want to scroll down to them.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna go through all that. So just keep that note in mind, and then when we get to the recommendations, we can talk about it. So these are key facts. Employee trends came out of the sector data that they gave us. Um, here we were gonna insert the tables that were in that report, um, if nobody's opposed. I think these are just some relative figures about the community. We're gonna, I didn't get to update this. We're gonna update this pie chart with a nice clean one, but this looks like that all the numbers are relatively accurate now.
All of those are from that economic overview, the one Kirk that I scanned and sent to you.
Yeah, I see that. Yeah.
And we talked earlier about they're like accurate facts that are nice to know, but I I don't know if we need them or not. I was putting them in to just thought it was easier to take them out than find them.
It certainly does paint a picture of the town and I, I, you know, we want to be able to do that because if you're trying to, you know, encourage economic development, developers are looking at this document.
I think it's relevant.
Yeah, I think it is good, and I'm actually kind of surprised by some of the numbers. I think that's useful to see.
Retailers, business, you know.
Yeah.
All sorts are looking here and saying, you know, what, what's the makeup of the town? What's going on, you know, before, do I want to locate in East Lime?
Yeah, we basically make the case that people in East Lime who uh, are on the higher income end do not work in town from this cheat compared to the stuff that comes through out of here, like how, like, or well, not, it was basically that you know, six thousand people are working that live in East Lime, but there's not six thousand jobs in East Lime.
So it tells the story that we're a bedroom community.
It does, yeah.
With lots.
This, I don't know if we need, but I had found it about how many new businesses are forming in East Lime compared with our neighbors, and you could only compare four other ones. So Lime technically borders us, but I didn't include them.
No, I think this is great.
I like it.
I like it too.
We look pretty favorable on this.
Industrious.
So breakdown of occupations with Denise Lime, uh, that was all again provided by sector.
Oh, the industry clusters.
Yep, and the figure goes in. Here again, we have education levels. I think in the previous iteration, that was under our demographics and as, uh, educational attainment. Uh, and then I, for lack of a better word, conclusion. Now, what was that note that you had there? Oh, that was the, yeah.
This looks good, guys.
Okay, so recommendations, number one, complete the following sustainable C T actions. Pretty straightforward.
Numbered this. It's all the same stuff, just as you see that it looks a little different. It's only because it's numbered, so it can go in the matrix.
There is the establish the cultural office of arts and cultural department of establish a cultural district. So these are new recommendations that we've never had before, um, develop a place making plan.
Can I read that one real quick? The place making plan one.
Just tell me when to scroll.
I just wanted to see that one. You can go.
So this kind of incorporates that art and culture into economic development. And then strengthen the northern Flanders neighborhood, which is that agricultural area. And this is where, as I was mentioning before, it could be zoned agriculture, and that's a could be, instead of it should or shall. Indicating that agricultural lands are technically commercial and as such should be preserved and enhanced, consider allowing residential development northern Flanders by special permit only or permitting additional accessory uses such as farm to table events, weddings, bed and breakfast, and other agrotourism industries. So that was my wordsmithing. Let me know what you think of that. I.
I like it.
Because I know, you know, from our previous discussions, it was unlikely that that area would be rezoned as agricultural or a completely different zone. But it's it's certainly a possibility. So I threw it out there.
I think this looks cool. I like all of those recommendations.
I like this idea of an agricultural hub and a couple of parcels in the love study that were identified for that, uh, at the end of one sixty-one, uh, the north end. Anybody else?
Yeah, and the hub, uh, that's a duplicate recommendation that I think is good for both sections, but that were.
So this, now, now E here, which is maintain the halfway property. It it's interesting. Again, that was number one on the open space list that natural resources I put together. Does it belong here in that? I mean, how is that, that, you know, other than it's used as an agricultural piece and considered in economic? But I don't know that that recommendation belongs right there.
Yeah, and same with D. Actually.
I could see D.
D and E, kind of. I don't know. We really need C, D, and E, but.
Well, economic development and not developing along roads. I don't know.
Yeah, I think.
We could change C to just switch the two halves of that statement, because you'd be supporting agriculture as an economic development tool by preserving this agricultural zone.
Yeah, kind of like the integrity of that space by, yeah, preserving it, its character. I don't know.
So, yeah, if you want to reword that, Michelle, you can take a crack at it.
And or rather than discourage development, encourage the conservation of, um, the character of agricultural character, something to that effect, um, which can be done by, um, maintaining use of farm fields from the roads, protecting ecological resources and maintaining the property as undeveloped as possible, blah, blah, blah.
That's good, except for the last part.
Blah, blah, blah. Yeah, I don't know. I just put three commas or semi, whatever those things are, semicolon.
No, but that all sounded good.
We have, uh, eliminated that recommendation on agricultural zone on the top of the page.
I still feel like we should do that.
Get rid of it completely. And I just used the word could there, because it's a thing that could be done. It's not.
Line says should be, oh, okay. On these roads thing, the CDD regulations are, do handle. That very recommendation. Doesn't hurt to leave it in there, but the CDD addresses that.
Bolster that point by referencing the CDD.
As defined, as specified in the CDD.
Yeah.
There we go.
It's the conservation development by design.
Oh.
Yes.
By design. Zoning regulations. Or should we say zoning and subdivision regulations or something?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, how about this? Because the CDD regulations also cover protection of ecological resources.
That's great. I like that. And then just, yeah.
And then how do we feel about the Hathaway property? That's very specific.
That is very specific. I'm not actually familiar with where that is located.
It's on the north side of.
All the time to get mums.
It's on the north side of Lake Patagonia.
What is it?
Is that near the Girl Scout place?
Yes, it's really. Okay, east of the Girl Scout.
Oh, that's quite important, because it links a lot of properties and it's right next to the lake. So I'd say that, if we go back to open space, I'd say that's probably one of the parcels that we would want to conserve.
It's on the top of the list of that yellow list.
That makes me feel better.
Again, if we mention it here specifically, as we have Osugachi Hills. And Nyanic River Estuary. And we're not mentioning specifically others. I don't know. It worries me a little bit.
Well, maybe if those are our top three, I don't know.
You could make the economic development case that the Hathaway property. Serves an economic development function as agritourism and recreation. Yeah, absolutely.
We are in economic development. I forgot, yeah.
So, so could you, what is Hathaway, the Hathaway property? What do they do there?
Michelle, can you like jump to the?
I might have missed that part. Sorry.
They are closed, but they were a nursery.
Got it.
The first map would work.
Yep, trying to find it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sorry.
No worries.
So this place was a nursery and it's right on the lake and there has, there's some agricultural value. As, as that.
Yes.
I would, yeah, I'd say it, right now, it sounds a little too open spacey in the economic development section. I would just be more explicit about the economic role it could have. Through those things that you just said.
I like that. I like that idea. Encourage the economic, encourage that. Encourage economic development of agricultural businesses like. That, like the Hathaway property, maybe?
Well, number one here is on the west side of the lake. That's the Hathaway piece that they're referring to. Parcel nine, I think it's either six or eight. One is the Girl Scout camp and the other is Whitegate Farm.
And who owns this now?
Girl Scouts.
I thought they sold it.
Yes, that's the Girl Scout farm. Yeah, I think John Drabek has an option on it. I did speak to JP Marine not that long ago. He had sent a crew out there. They surveyed it. And they looked like they were looking to get a, some lots on Upper Pat possibly. I mean, I don't, I don't know, but that never seemed to go anywhere. So it's been several months now. So I don't know what's going to happen out there.
What if, what if we encouraged the Hathaway property as to be agriculture with also public. Access to Patagonia Lake.
I think that sounds great. I think that if we make a strong case, maybe that, yeah, it could have economic value. Maybe you could even, you know, it'd be amazing, you know, Stoneacre Farms in Stonington. Like how they've turned that into a venue where they do concerts and food and music, like all sorts of activities. Having a space like that. Would be really cool. That's all.
This is all open farmlands for the most part there?
So those activities, I think, really need to get just like permitted under zoning.
We put that in, the recommendations.
Yeah, we do have.
Like, hey, Norm, how do we do that?
It's already in to a certain degree. Have to confess that I have worked on the side with. Mark Christensen on developing an expansion of that regulation, allowing more use.
That'd be great, yeah.
He hasn't come forth with it.
Okay, well, now we'll at least have, there's recommendations here to support it if he does, I suppose.
Let's put that in there. Let's, um, let's make some notes. I talked to him quite frequently.
We did. We talked about it when you did your agricultural section and then I added the words in today, because that was one of the ones that was like.
Let's just put that in this section too, though, in reference to the Hathaway thing in economic development, like even more explicitly.
But do we, are we sure we want that use there? I'm not against it. I just don't want to tie us into something so specific. That if somebody wants to buy it and leave it as walking trails, this plan still supports it.
Yeah, well, I could say, we could consider it recreation, outdoor recreational opportunities. Through either trails and multi-use whatevers or. Agricultural and enter.
Maintain the Hathaway property as either agricultural. Or. A public open space with access to Patagonia Lake.
Perfect.
Maybe, maybe do this, do a, can you do like a comma and or both?
Wonderful.
Cause you could have both, right?
Yes. This is actually kind of fun when we think about some of these ideas. Fun for a grant writer.
It's the only reason I'm in the business. Actually, implementing is our part. All right, recommendation number three, enhance the Nyanic Flanders Village by taking following actions and encourage range of mixed use land use. We already do that. I think it's just continue to encourage it. So I don't know if we want to change the language there to say continue, but. I think the second sentence there is a little more explanatory. As far as how to do it. B, transition from strip development to mixed use in Flanders. I don't know if that needs more explanation, but. We can, I could certainly give it more. And that was the idea of having, where there's a kind of a buffer between. This more intense commercial use and, you know, light residential up the road. So the, the homes in between could be, say, multifamily, two-family. Maybe even house a business or so, you know, like a light office type business. That was, I think, the intent there.
I think we're okay as the sentence is, because the love study will describe it further and that similar recommendation appears in commercial zoning.
Okay.
Or commercial and industrial development.
See, this is the, you know, upgrade the visual quality of Flanders through installation of sidewalk, street trees, planters. These are all typical streetscape improvements you would recommend with any, I think, economic.
Yeah, this is already in zoning, so.
Looks good.
Maybe, maybe throw art in there. You get points for art, don't we?
Did I, I think.
Yeah, art comes.
I think you put that in the very beginning.
Yeah.
Also, there's a space that's needed on E in between constraints and all those, although.
We could reference it, I mean.
No, it's fine.
You know, again, there's another, it's kind of a two recommendations, recommendations in the same one here, encourage property owners to upgrade. Their facades basically through an incentive program. So that's really kind of its own idea. May want to break that one out. Again, this is, you know. Well, what's the incentive?
Hat on the back.
Yeah.
A post-COVID hug.
So I don't know, you know, it's benign, I think, to leave it, but certainly. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on it. Again, and then E, strengthen Main Street by celebrating its proximity to the sound. Again, that I think we try to do that as much as we can. F doesn't make any sense.
What? Yeah.
Can I just take it out?
Yeah. So F is a kind of a. I mean, again, I'm not sure if this is like the best place for it. Something I struggled with, but again, as we develop out for commercial development and things like that, countering strip development. Looking to, you know, we already made comments on this in transportation, Kirk, I think about, you know, interconnections between parking lots. So it's again here. And then G was really the. Seemed to be the biggest thing that I read in all the documents that I was going through is wayfinding. Throughout town is we need a better wayfinding system in downtown for, to get to the beaches and marinas. So again, there's another plug for public art. Street lighting, things like that. Four, promote home-based business along state roads. This is where this kind of ties in with that recommendation above, which was to transition that between commercial and residential. So maybe it makes sense to put that other one down here. That was B, transition strip development.
Yeah, so it'd be in Flanders, but it would be in Nyanic too. We can.
Yeah, so, because that other, well, that, the other recommendation says between, once the highway is basically Route 156 and 161. I guess I could go, I don't know.
Is it like?
Maybe I would take that and actually stick it at the right in front of where it says promote home-based business.
Yeah, you could combine those two.
Oh, there you go. Thank you.
That work?
That works perfect. So that's the idea. I don't know, buddy, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, that's in commercial too. That's like the.
Okay. Obviously, we always encourage the expansion of existing year-round businesses. Prove public services, encourage and develop opportunities to low-impact home-based businesses. Again, there's a lot of home-based business encouragement here. I guess maybe we're. It's a little top-heavy, I think, on that, but.
I think it's a good recommendation to repeat over and over because. It is a way to maintain a residential character while not having as. Big of a burden on the.
I like, I wish it was a little stronger. Cause it's kind of a new thing, energy efficient type businesses. But again, I don't want it, you, we can't cater to any one industry, you know, so. But certainly there's things that businesses can do regardless of their industry that becomes energy efficient. Again, support agriculture, and I added aquaculture as important economic activities. And again, I mean, I don't know, you know, support and promote sustainable fisheries, I guess, does that kind of capture it in number nine?
I'd like to. Add the word fisheries and the marine. Industry, which is one of our biggest.
I had heard some talk from Mark Salerno about this area here. He, he was, he did mention to me that there was some interest in doing more. I think he said dockage down near the genie park and that area. So I think there have been discussions higher up than, than. Our group here about that. So I feel like if we put this here, they're gonna add, they're probably gonna add to it. I think it's a good one to leave.
Do we, there were some ones in sustainable CT that I think came out. When we reformatted to get the art ones in, but I, would we be comfortable adding in? The sustainable CT actions that talk about not, not only, it kind of is related to number eight. Supporting businesses that, you know, make energy alternative. I am so tired tonight. Helping our current businesses become more energy efficient. That is a recommendation that I'm not sure if it belongs in just clean energy or also economic development. But one could make the case that.
I think this is good.
Demand on our infrastructure, allowing us to serve more, have a higher capacity.
I like that idea. Expand it to do not only businesses that provide. Energy efficiency, but also encourage businesses to use energy efficient methods and buildings and appliances, whatever. Is that kind of where you're going? You want to do both?
Yeah, there was something I can try to show. I went to the, this section of the sustainable CT. And. This one had some sustainability recommendations and so did this one. This kind of thing.
I think, I think that you could definitely argue for some economic. Like that would be an economic. Issue. So I think, I like, I kind of like this idea of adding something like that.
I, I think definitely, you know, recommend reducing. Their energy consumption. I did notice at the end of that, there was a plug for their affordable lending. Commercial property assessment, clean energy, C-Pace program with affordable long-term financing. So I don't think we should say that, that's. Plug for business, but certainly we should empower the community to preserve and make those efficiencies on energy conservation.
Well, from an economic point of view, could we just say maybe incentives are available? For businesses. If they are energy efficient and follow those guidelines. There's loans available, there could be loans or grants available.
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely say support. I don't even know if they're, I'd have to do some more research to see if we could even, you know, develop. It'd be great if we could develop a program like at the local level where the municipality could be the, the grant funder to some of these businesses. To install solar, take, you know, certain, you know, new windows or whatever it is. But, you know, like, I, I kind of envision if you could couple that with, with a facade improvement program. And through kind of both pots of money, one's through like DECD, one would be through like deep. That you can upgrade the facades and make all these improvements that are energy efficient. Right?
And improving your business at the same time, which also has an impact.
I mean, so I, I don't know.
Economic impact.
You know, how realistic it is that the town is, is the, you know, would be able to. Be the grantee, but, uh. I know when I, I worked in Colchester, we did something similar to, to that, where the town applied for a state grant to improve facades. And then they doled out money to the individual businesses that put a certain percentage of their own funds toward those facades as well.
Jerry, I think you'd be really good at that job.
Um, gotta put the pieces together and, yeah, we can make it happen. But.
I do think you're, I, I think having somebody as like a liaison of sorts to, to, to work. These programs, like be knowledgeable, uh, you know, for these kind of programs. Maybe through, uh.
Well, I'm kind of hoping through the sustainable CT program that, as, as we're involved in that, the Natural Resource Commission will. You know, over time, become well-educated in this and be able to help be that resource for us. I don't, you know, for the time being, anyway. Support, improve environmental.
I don't know if I want to put this last part about decreased demand on. This is why it matters to the town. This is why it matters to the. Business owner. But I don't think I'm saying it correctly.
I think that's pretty clear.
Okay.
I like it.
Great. I didn't realize we had one after the marine industry. Oh, we have a bunch. Okay. Visual markers.
This came out of the love study. I'm thinking this is an opportunity to incorporate, uh, art.
I agree with that. And from an economic point of view, by, you know, telling. You know, the relationship between the two areas.
That, I think this came out of the love study as well. These last few did. Zoning regulations should be reviewed, advised, needed to make them more user-friendly, easy to follow, various boards and commissions that review development proposals. Must also work to speed up the review and approval process. Also include incentives to architectural design for commercial developments and remodeling of existing buildings. Well, the town, we've already adopted zoning regs for, in the downtown for architectural design. So, you know, that could be applied to Flanders as well. Uh, so I don't know if we want to reword that. And then in terms of speeding up the review process, I mean, I think the town at the point we're at, we're, we're as fast as we can go in the sense that. We, we have a statutory framework within which we have to work. Obviously, if we can speed up the process, we, we do. So I don't know that we can do a whole lot there, um, short of making things. You know, approval, approvable by the town staff, or we can just, you know. I think for the most part, we, we narrowed that down as to what the boards and commissions are comfortable allowing town staff to approve and. What, what they're willing to approve. So I don't know that there's really a whole lot of opportunity to increase the, the speed in which we issue permits. In regards to whether the regs are user-friendly, that's a little subjective. Certainly, both documents are very long. Uh, the subdivision regs are long, zoning regs are long. But I don't know that there's any easier way to do that, maybe with a, you know, some sort of professional editor to. Go through and figure all that out. Might, might help lay it out better, but I don't know that there's an, you know. Whole lot we can do there either to make that easier. But always willing to open to suggestions. Uh, then seeking funding for economic development and infrastructure projects, as well as investigate various other state and federal and private grant programs, which might be available. It's kind of a general recommendation. Ensure developers fund their share of improvements whenever possible. Certainly agree with that. And then references. And that is economic development.
I might be comfortable with removing this one.
Okay.
It's not that I disagree with what it's saying, but I feel like it's, uh. I don't know.
I don't like.
No.
The one of, the line on the bottom about promote architectural design. Is sort of a different subject.
Yeah.
Leave that out in there.
Yeah, it's an interesting one, because it's like simplify the zoning regulations, but make more controls for architectural design.
Like, I can see where architectural design relates to commercial development or economic development in that. We already state in the beginning of this section that, you know, pleasing places attract people and businesses, right? So. I get, I get it. And I don't.
Can we say? I mean, that, what you just said is like pretty to the point.
I believe that's already mentioned in the introduction of this chapter.
Yeah, I think it is. And in the villages.
That, and in there as well. I don't think we.
Maybe we took it out of the villages.
I, I think it's in the narrative part.
I have, I have a question, kind of not exactly about anything that's on here right now, but, um. It's more related to the previous P O C D. And we in the last one kind of broke out where the town money comes from. And, uh. Do we want to go there in this one? Uh, as far as like tax revenues, uh, projected areas where we feel like the town should plan. I had mentioned one time before, one of the things that worries me is the state's ability to give us money. And how that would balance with how much we take in in taxes and how much we're planning to take in in taxes.
Definitely an issue, I think, I mean, that's a bigger one, I think, to tackle than what, what do we have time?
Uh, well.
Although I.
I feel like if it's that big of an issue, then we should, we should definitely call it out. At, at a minimum, put a bullet on there that says we need to think about where our taxes are coming from. And how much and, you know, what we see the outlook for the next little while. I feel like, I feel like we, we would have to do something with that.
Yeah, so then maybe we can just make the recommendation that we. Take a closer look at the municipal finance section and.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I was trying to get there.
Let me see if I can.
I have some, I have some emails out that were never returned and, you know, there is a, there, there is an action out there that hasn't been executed.
So I think, um. So maybe we should just make the, like you said, the plug, maybe we make the recommendation that we. I mean, short of being able to actually update that table in that section, uh, municipal finance. We would then just make a recommendation that we update it.
It would be, and, and I would also, um. I think that the Board of Selectmen definitely would want to have a clear chance to. Comment on the economic development part two. As, as the rest of the town. I mean, we've tried to get the other, uh. Like, uh, town staff to weigh in on this and haven't really been successful. So I feel like, I feel like. There should be some input from them.
That's what we're getting in the month of August.
Okay.
Right? So they get it first before planning a doc. We, we vote to send it to them.
Right.
But then they.
I should hope that they would have.
They have almost two months before we have to post it to the public.
The, the Board of Selectmen gets 60 days to review it, hold their own public hearing if they want, and analyze this. So, uh, certainly when we, uh, the plan going forward is. The planning commission Tuesday night would vote to forward this to the Board of Selectmen. And then Wednesday night, Michelle and I would present it to the Board of Selectmen, not in its entire, we would just say, here you go, this is what your charge is. You have 60 days to hold a public hearing and review it.
Right, right. I get, I, I get, I get that.
And then.
My, my, my point is that they, they would definitely add content to this. That's all my point.
Oh, uh, we, well, what I'm saying is I think Michelle and I could ask them specifically to look at this. Because all I, I mean, I, I have one, you know, 10 years ago, Pat, my past history of my one time here with the town, and they didn't comment at that time.
Right.
So I suspect they may not comment now unless we ask them specifically to look at the section. So we certainly could do it, and I think it's warranted, and I, and obviously, being that the section wasn't updated. At the, with the last iteration in 2009. We can kind of call it out and bring special attention to economic development and ask them to take a close look at it.
Absolutely.
Okay, sound good?
I think, I think we should put a bullet on here, though, at least to, to do some financial projections. Or something about the state funding levels or whatever. I don't know.
All right.
What is the action item out of that? I don't disagree with you. I'm just trying.
I guess my concern is the amount of money we're going to get from the state. And the amount of money that we're paying in taxes now, and for us to come up with an economic development plan. And not say that, you know. There's some financial. I guess you're right, you're, you're, you're right to, you're right to put it that way, where what is the action? I, I see it from that point of view. I'm just trying to share my concern is all.
Yeah, I totally get it.
So, I'll think about it. I, if I could think of an action item other than, you know, look at the state funding levels. Or monitor state funding levels, which I suppose they're going to do already as part of their job. So maybe, maybe I'm not. Maybe I'm, um. Just, uh, being a little extra.
What if we put it in the upfront of this section? What if we acknowledge?
Well, I think it could have its own animal. It, it's municipal finance versus economic development.
Yeah, but we could make the case that economic development is even more important in light of uncertainty and state funding. Therefore, these recommendations to strengthen the economic base of, um, East Lime are. You know, important, whatever word we want to choose, because I do think that they are separate, like, we're not going to budget off of this section. But it kind of would just call attention to.
What you just said?
Yeah.
I, I agree, I agree with the spirit of what you were saying, and I also agree that. It is kind of two separate things. And one is the, you know, kind of look to the, what the state's going to do and look to the future. And the other thing is, what about the municipal finance section? I, I, I feel like it was in the last one. And I don't know, if you, if you feel like we don't need a municipal finance section, then I'm okay with that too.
We can certainly add one. It wasn't on the table of contents, just because when we built it.
Right.
Nobody mentioned it, but we can. There's no reason not to.
Um, I mean, it's, it's a very short section in the.
I feel like if they just answered the, you know, filled out the table and gave a little bit of work, you know, like. Read the narrative and maybe have some input on the, the front matter, I think I would be okay with all that.
Agreed. We're just held up there, um, I guess as background for the rest of the committee. So Kirk, Kirk had reached out to the finance and we're waiting to hear back and haven't yet, so. Um, I'll try to follow up with Anna tomorrow and see if she'll crank something out for us. If not, what my suggestion is we just maybe. Edit this 13 to, um. Say that something completely different, uh, like, like you were saying. I would definitely get rid of the first two sentences, and then maybe we just say that the town, recommend the town. Review its municipal finances and, uh. Something, you know, in, in light of the fact that. The section's not being updated in. Or, you know, this go around or something like that. I don't know if we want to come right out and say it, but.
I wouldn't make it a recommendation. I would put it up here as setting the scene for the recommendations. Somewhere in here, here.
So that, that would be a good place to have some, uh, background information related to taxes and tax revenue. And whatever concerns, what, what concerns as, as the municipal finance department, what concerns do they have?
How about this? Additionally, in light of the. Conditions. The recent conditions that have developed and the. General conditions of the state of Connecticut. Uh, it is more important than ever to. Follow these guidelines. Be as efficient as possible in spending. And avoid. Well, make every effort to.
Well, I think if you.
Maintain, maintain, uh. The low, low taxes, or however you want to put it.
Right, I like that. And maintain low taxes. I, I, I would argue that a lot, that like the majority, not all, but I would say. A large majority of all the recommendations in this document would be in our financial best interest.
Agreed.
And. Um, how that relates, somehow tie it back to, uh. The financial health of the town.
Um, okay, so maybe.
Well, the, the current.
I think we're saying a couple of different things, because also we agree that all the, there's a lot in here that we're saying. We should spend money on because it's a good investment long-term. So.
Well, I think those are key words there. Something like that would be appropriate to say right here.
Efficient is the magic word.
Yep, efficient.
Right, but is it efficient to, you know, joke you public for us to buy the Oswegachi Hills?
In, in the long. In, in the long term, in the plan, if you were to sit and plan out something for the long term, I would argue, yeah, it would be. You know, this is that, this is whole, that, that whole for the greater good kind of argument, you know, you, you, you tile that greater good stuff back to the financial implications of it.
Yeah. How about, what if I, I'm going to leave this so we can come back to it? But what if?
I mean, I, I guess I take. Let me short, I'm, I'm looking at the existing section. I think the text of it could easily be integrated into what we have, but the data and the charts obviously is outdated. But I think the sentiment's the same. There's a couple of things I tweak because it but overall it's pretty accurate. I mean, it, it highlights, you know, the increase in development and schoolchildren, which I don't know that that's necessarily the issue right now, schoolchildren, but we do know that with development, schoolchildren can come and increase costs to the town. Um, I may we word something like that differently. So if it, you know, if it makes more sense, we can just copy and paste and create a new section here called municipal finance. And then maybe if we get lucky and hear from Anna on those charts, we can update the, the, the data in those tables, but. But again, reading the recommendations in the existing P O C D, it's, you know, talking about managed growth, look to the other sections, right? The other chapters that have recommendations for managed growth and then provide financial support for these recommendations when necessary. Um, funding for the future was basically, you know, take a look at your capital expenditures and, you know, just budget wisely, I think is. You know.
That's where we could put the grant writer too.
And I think, I think you just said another important thing was, uh, long-term capital expenditures. That came up a couple of times.
They.
In, in the emergency resources section.
Yeah, I also recommends investing in economic development.
Yeah. I feel like the stronger we make this, uh, the statement of, of the tie between the economic part of the whole problem and the recommendations that we put in here, the, the better. Cause that's when, you know, you'll get all the people who want to, want to reserve the land for the future and make it natural and beautiful and all that. You'll get all those guys. You've got all their attention anyway. If you can make the economic case, I feel like you're going to get a lot more people to pay attention.
I think if we, there have been a lot of studies that talk about, um, basically when you have more green spaces, just kind of going on that little note that you just mentioned about, you know, tying together the conservationists and the people who are interested in the economic side of things. There have been a lot of studies that have shown that when you do have more green spaces and you do have like the bike paths and hiking trails and all these opportunities for tourism that it brings in a massive amount of money into a given region. Um, so I don't know if that's something that we want to stress more in this economic section about like what types of, um, I don't know, maybe tying the, the tourism aspect into our town. I feel like that is something that brings most people to our town are the beaches and like our green spaces.
Yeah.
Cause it's not Waterford, it's not New London, you know, like people come to East Lime for green space, beaches, and obviously the schools. So I don't know.
I'm, I agree.
I'm just throwing that in there. I haven't really said anything. Wow, my God.
No, I agree with that. Have we made the case strong enough for the economic impacts of all those, all those green type of attributes that we have?
I'm not sure. I don't think we have, honestly. I think that we could do that a little bit more in this section. It doesn't have to be huge.
But I mean, you know, even just stating maybe two or three studies. Like I know there have been studies that have shown like bike paths have brought in, uh, you know, along the Hudson River Valley have brought in millions of dollars in tourism. I don't know. Things like that, throwing in a few things like that.
Now, what do we have in town for like a, uh, an economic committee for bringing in tourism? Do we have a tourism committee?
We have an economic development commission and it's not currently seated.
Like, let's look at our nearby towns. What towns? You know, like Connecticut and particularly where we live along the shoreline, it's not Boston, it's not New York City. Like where are other towns? Like, how are they thriving? I look at Stonington Mystic, they've got a big restaurant scene, they've got tourism. I don't know. I feel like that's something that's really big. Like, is a huge tech company going to put its base here in East Lime? I really don't think so. Like, we did have Pfizer and like, yeah, we've got Millstone, but I don't think of southeastern Connecticut. Yeah, maybe aside from like EB as being like a booming economic region. I don't know. These are just.
You're highlighting a weakness in addition to a strength. I mean, think about right now in the middle of a pandemic when no one can go anywhere. Doubling down on tourism.
The beaches are all full, the, the hiking areas are all full.
The open space. Yeah, the open space, but not the.
We need to make a, a larger case for economically for preserving those spaces. I don't know if we've done that enough in this section. Otherwise, I think this section is fantastic. I think it's good. Like I've agreed with every point so far. That's just one thing where I think we can make it a little bit more robust. And that can bolster our other recommendations in some of our other sections.
All right, how about, I have a suggestion to move this forward. We take out this budgeting thing that we're trying to work on here. We add a recommendation or some statements that talk about open space actually being an economic driver and we hint at that and even say it outright in a bunch of the other stuff that shows cost of community service. We then create a new chapter. I'm trying to pull up a little. But it's a short chapter.
On finance, which is what Norm is talking about, about being better. All right.
Services we aim to provide. And we could call it something like sustainable municipal budgeting. Then we are hitting on that again.
I agree with all of Norm's points, like keeping taxes low, like being really frugal. I think that that's super important, especially right now.
But in sustainable municipal budgeting in that chapter, the recommendations from the current chapter, you know, establish an open space fund for future acquisition of open space to help offset the financial impacts of residential growth.
Yeah.
Capital reserve funds for long-range infrastructure items, like all this resiliency stuff we're suggesting to invest in, prioritizing long-range capital expenditures. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a long view on taxes.
Where, what document is this from?
What?
What document is that that you're reading?
The 2009 P O C D.
Love that thing.
I, I read all those recommendations verbatim.
Wait, didn't we copy and paste that right in here?
This is in the municipal finance section.
We have municipal finance section. Let's just pop that in there and let's.
I think we should just take the old one and have them update that.
Yeah, sustainable municipal finance and then goal number one, all of what Norm just said. Boom.
Yeah.
What do you think, Norm?
Right.
Yep. I'll work on that tonight and I'll develop that for them and then I'll get them to update the data if we can do that.
One more. Sorry. How about adding a recommendation for a tourism board or a committee or some kind of tourism?
Not the Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, I'm against that recommendation only as someone who has been employed by some of those boards.
Doesn't work. Okay. All right.
Well, there, there's been a, there's a lot of, what happens is it's, it's a, it's a really good idea and premise, so I'm not insulting the idea, but what has happened historically has been kind of the New England thing where everyone thinks they need their own. And there is so little funding to go around that they end up competing with each other and, uh, not being successful. But I think that we have that already in the Chamber of Commerce, the Eastern Regional Tourism District and locally through Niantic Main Street, which you can definitely argue that there are other tourism destinations out in East Lime outside of the Niantic Main Street area, but that that is the primary.
How about something that says maybe promote partnerships with local business groups?
Yeah.
That's a very, a very, that, that gets to what a, uh, an important point of um, promoting tourism and business.
Well, yes, and I think that's what we discovered.
Okay.
After we finish this section, is anybody opposed to taking a five-minute break?
I think that's a good idea.
To either eat or go to the bathroom.
No problem.
Can I take out recommendation 13 and can I take out the sec, this sentence that we started writing and didn't really complete up here?
Definitely take out.
Norm one, let's shift that to the new section. Let's just have that be sentence number one on sustainable municipal whatevers, finance.
And can I take out recommendation 13?
Can I read it again? Sorry, I don't.
The one about zoning regulations.
Yeah.
What do you think, Norm?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Uh, the architectural thing, I wouldn't mind leaving, leaving that in there. The last line.
Provide incentives to promote architectural. Yeah, I think that's good. I would keep that for sure because we don't want a whole bunch of hideous buildings.
Yeah, that's where.
Walking into our town.
Okay.
Thanks.
Now that you cut and picked, did you lose that language that art, that?
Nope, it's in my clipboard. And I'm going to make a new document right now.
Oh, I think you already did that.
I made it on the, um, table.
Lines or whatever.
Oh. So did we just finish economic development?
I think we did.
Think so.
You're right. It's two down.
How many are we doing tonight?
I thought we were only doing two, so.
Oh, I have clean energy as well.
Did we? Yeah, so, um.
Why don't you do, we can blast through clean energy. I will.
Well, let's just check in first because did anybody want to go through education and outreach or background? There are no recommendations. It's just summary. And so if we don't want to go through those, I would be in support of blasting through clean energy. If we do want to go through them, I would be in support of a break.
I would go through them. I'm in support of going through them. If we can go through them, just kind of like maybe just read it together. And if we see any like big red, red flags, just be like, I don't know.
Yeah, I could see that. And then maybe take, take some time offline to really go through it after.
So.
I don't need to.
What are we, going to take five and then go through green energy? And then if we want to hit? I don't know, either.
I think that sounds good.
Might think better with the break.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
See you guys in five minutes.
Pause, I'll pause recording or should I let it record?
You can pause it, I think. And then I'm just going to turn off my video. Behind you, is that like an old fashioned like sewing machine or something?
Yeah, it is. It actually works.
That's neat.
Weighs about 100 pounds.
That doesn't surprise me, actually. All right. Ready for clean energy.
Let's do it.
You want a screen share or you want me to?
You can do it. Michelle can drive. She can drive.
Oh, I, yeah, I could, here, I'll bring it up.
It's not profoundly different. I just bulked it up a bit. It's about 12 pages long though.
I don't know, that's a long one.
I know. Yeah, hack it.
Got 18 chapters now, if they were all 12 pages.
All right. So history of energy in East Lime and the surrounding area. I talked a little bit about Millstone Nuclear Power Plant, the decommissioning of unit one due to safety violations, how we remain, we have two units remaining. And they produce 47% of Connecticut's, Connecticut's energy and PURA, uh, Public Utility Regulatory Agency, Dominion, Eversource, and United Illuminated, Illuminating, um, have decided to keep Millstone open for the next 10 years through this contract that they signed at the end of 2019. And I, you know, obviously Millstone is a fossil fuel free energy source, but we need to come up with something additional clean energy sources moving forward. Current state of energy in East Lime and the surrounding area. I talk quite a bit about, um, the Green Skies project and some of the, I guess, controversy that arose because of the impacts, uh, that occurred on the waterways because of the clear cutting of the forest. So I think obviously it's important to encourage renewable energy project development, but this, um, project in particular has been somewhat contentious because of its impacts that citizens in our town have, um, highlighted. So. Whoop, what happened?
I just.
Okay, sorry. All right, we're good. Um, the, the box just like shrunk. I can't, wait a minute. Wait. Okay, sorry. All right, energy efficiency. Um, I, I just referred to that study that was done in 2011 by ECG Engineering. I left the schools in there, but I did say, um, since the completion of the assessment, the three elementary schools have undergone substantial innovations which have included energy efficiency measures. Um, and then yep, just that's, you know, talking about the municipal buildings efficiency and, um, for some reason my, this box is so small. Hold on. Oh, there we are. Good. Now it's full screen. Um, yep. And then I just talked a little bit about those figures. This is all the work that Lily Freiberg did. Um, I guess when she was interning and then, um, the savings that could amount from these energy efficiency measures. And then the next section is, um, renewable energy development. So this is just broadly the information. This is like more, I'd say national and global in scale, just talking about the importance of renewable energy project development in general. And, um, some of the savings that could result from renewable energy project development. Then, um, in this next section, um, uh, environment-focused renewable energy citing. So this is, this is where a lot of stuff came in today, when I worked on it. And this is from, uh, these are primarily recommendations from Solar CT. Um, and this is all about citing. So I think if people want to read this a little bit more closely, I will be quiet for a few minutes and then people can absorb this. I've largely just taken their recommendations. They all seem quite sound to me, to be honest. It's quite reasonable. Just basically saying that, um, you're going to do a renewable project. Don't put it in the middle of where a forest once was because it's going to probably cause a ton of runoff.
So this speaks to the Walnut Hill case.
Specifically. Um, the next section is microgrid development. So a micro. Um, the next section is microgrid development. So a microgrid, I just give a little definition from energy.gov. And I think that this could be something that could be really important for resiliency. Um, you know, if we have a natural disaster, like I can think back on several times where we've had hurricanes, where we haven't had power for, you know, a week. And if we had our own microgrid and we're not um entirely reliant on the larger grid in Connecticut, that could enable our. Um, town to, you know, keep some of our necessary functions going. Um, and I think this is really important in terms of resiliency. Um, I specifically bring up the hurricanes and um. Just also align on using fuel for home heating and um potentially considering uh heating and electrification.
You know, I, I have to admit, I think about this probably every day.
Really?
And yeah, and I'm very concerned about this and I, I've just, time after time, I hear. Uh, people talk about how close we have come for, to a major shutdown from computer hacking. And uh, I think this should all be in capital letters.
Thanks.
I agree.
That idea.
I agree. And do we want to add the word resiliency in here? Do I, do I see it at all?
Yeah, it's there. And grid and grid resiliency, especially as natural disasters threaten grid security during blackouts for hospitals, police stations, and other critical services.
I don't know if the, I don't know if this would be feasible. Or a good idea or not, because it's mostly the, the larger towns that do it, but they have their own utility companies. Groton Utilities, Norwich Utilities. Uh, they're both large populations. I don't, I don't know. I just thought I'd throw that out.
Let's add that at the end of that sentence then, uh, dependency in East Lime. Consider the establishment of a town uh utility.
I don't, I don't know if I would, I guess, I guess consider is one thing. But there's, there's just as much evidence it, that. Um. You know, all these little smaller utility companies then end up not making the necessary. Investments in their system because they can't, they don't have the scale.
Yeah.
Options, I think, is what, you know, diversification, clearly, you know, like microgrid, uh, home panels. Many kinds of fuel. I'm open to considering a utility. I don't know.
Well, I'd be interested in what like the community thinks. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, one of my recommendations is to establish a clean energy task force.
Oh. I, I do, I, I certainly think that, you know, energy independence, you know, is important.
Yeah.
Uh, for any town. Yeah, so, um. That comes in the form of a local utility.
I say we should consider it.
What do you think, Cor?
I think so. I think that um, and you could also. Tie it to resiliency a little bit. You could make the statement that said, consider establishing it. And you could give some, maybe say. To enhance resiliency, maybe. I don't know.
You know, that first line pretty much alludes to that. I don't think you have to mention it.
Okay.
You know, I think this is well done as it is.
Okay. Okay. And then the next section then is engage community and leadership. Uh, the model of economic growth, I just talking, this is more than my students did. There's um this program called Climate Mayors. I talked a little bit about this last time. It's through, um, Mayor Bloomberg started like a coalition. Of mayors and first selectmen that are focused on addressing climate change um in their local communities. Uh, because I really think that this is probably one of the best places at the local level to try to um, you know. Be environmentally conscious. If you can do it in municipalities, I think that's like a really great step.
I like the fact that you had the economic, right? You said economic up there too.
Yeah, my students worked on.
That's important.
Economic growth, yeah.
Yeah, so.
All right, recommendations.
Create a town of East Lime Clean Energy Task Force. Um, transition a hundred percent clean electricity by twenty thirty-five. The development of local renewable energy projects.
I support this recommendation, but can you tell me, like, does it mean East Lime is producing as much as it's buying?
I think the East Lime should produce one hundred percent of its own. I wrote, that's what I personally believe. Because I think that that is gonna enable us to have that, you know, microgrid. I mean, it's not a lot of time. That really is not a lot of time, but I, I think if you're looking at climate change. This is our target, like hundred percent by twenty thirty-five is what we need to hit. And if we, as a community, want to be resilient to just shocks in general. We should just do it as a town. And I can't see CLMP and, and, and uh Eversource hitting this as fast, but if, as a town, we were like, all right, we're doing this. Like, that's why the climate mayor's thing exists. Is to push this at the local level.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm asking for a definition on like what, so. Does that, I'm, I'm wondering if it means that. East Lime to power the buildings we own is making and, and or buying clean. I'm wondering how. As uh individual homeowners and businesses maintain the ability to choose their own electric supply. I'm wondering if you meant what that, what the town buys or everyone in these town borders? I just think we need to define it. I.
I think it should be what the town does. So there's a different thing. It's like called a CCA. I forget the acronym, like, or what it stands for, but it's um. Communities can choose to be like, oh, we're gonna buy a one hundred percent renewable, but right now that's not um allowed, like at the state level. There's like regulations that prevent that from happening. So I think uh that might not be possible. Um, purchase it, to purchase one hundred percent renewable. Be like, as a community, we purchased this.
Yeah, there is a stepped program. Um, that the state has uh in Connecticut. With goals by year.
But it's not like close to being implemented. That's the problem. Like, I really don't. I'm really wary of just relying on the state of Connecticut and I'd rather push it locally in our town. I would say transition to uh municipal production. And consumption of one hundred percent clean electricity.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just.
No, no, I know you're not.
Could um. Use and support.
Uh.
Do we want to mention the goals that the state had at all anywhere?
Yeah, we should. I think, yeah, Michelle's right. We should mention it somewhere for sure. I didn't um through, we met too, all right, yeah.
Are we good with that? That's number two? Transition municipal production and consumption to a hundred percent clean energy or is that?
Yeah.
In a perfect world, that would be awesome.
Yeah. Um, yeah, what's the, all right, so the state one, what should we, how can we reference that, Michelle? Maybe we could throw that in as the next recommendation, is just like support state initiatives that. Um, are working towards achieving one hundred percent by twenty twenty or twenty thirty-five through, I don't know, like Eversource, whatever.
Put it as part of number two. So where we, so, and that will, I think that'll be a.
I would do.
A less of a barrier to the one hundred percent because we're gonna develop and purchase. Right? I mean, I, it would.
Thinking.
Um, transition municipal production and consumption to one hundred percent clean electricity. I'm wondering if we need to define that differently. By twenty thirty-five, through the development of local renewable energy projects and the purchase of.
But I don't want to have the purchase be, I don't know, like. Maybe it's too idealistic, but I just feel like we should go for what's gonna be best for our town, like. Getting wrapped up in the state like bruhaha, I don't know.
Saying we purchased it from the state, like, I'm saying if we, it's, you know what, it doesn't matter. This is good.
How about, yeah, is that, well, one line, pretty good. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, all right, develop microgrid that enables East Lime to generate all electricity.
Or not, it's a perfect.
This is what Gary recommended, new developments and commercial developments to include renewable energy resources that have the ability to provide electricity to the associated buildings. I think that's a really good idea. Gary had mentioned that, I think. Um, this is one Michelle mentioned, utilize public private partnerships to develop solar projects. And in the end, um, I referenced the one that she suggested about um mass DOT. I list that as an example. Allow space for electric vehicle charging stations and all municipal, oh, sorry, that should be municipal buildings and public parking spaces where it. Sorry. Uh, Lisa.
Couple of windmills at the town dump.
Yeah, that'd be amazing.
Seven can combine with five. Seven's kind of an example.
Sure.
Of five.
Sure. Uh, utilize public private, uh, such as least existing, yeah. Or, or they can be two separate things. And then this is once again from the Solar CT people, number eight. Um, and they really got into the weeds here, but I don't know, I appreciate that. Because it's really specific about what they think should happen to prevent um.
Prevent the catastrophe.
Yeah, exactly. I thi- I was really impressed actually by what they sent. I thought it was really thorough and they actually do spell out some things that the town here can do, so. Um.
Why did this not apply in the one that's going on in Waterford? I, that's, I, I am getting us off topic.
Michelle's like, wait.
I think you should email them this.
Well, well, I mean, I would just say, I mean. I can't speak for my counterpart in Waterford, but this is the first time I'm actually looking at this information in that it's, it's, this is new to me that there's recommendations on citing these things. Because when we dealt with this thing, it was just a monster. And now I've got guidance, so as a, you know, municipal professional, I'm thankful, but. Uh, my guess would be possibly, maybe Abby's not aware, so.
It seems like Solar CT should be going direct to the citing council.
Well, I don't think that they can, and that's why they're asking the town to serve as the participant. To have the town serve as a party in the process, because I think that's what didn't happen last time. Like, the town needs to be like its own entity in the.
To get into the process, you have to enter as an intervenor. And then that, that just costs significant dollars to the town. And you have to weigh, are we gonna do this or not? And, and that's, you know, that's a, fortunately it comes through the Board of Selectmen and.
Goes to the citing council if it's over five megawatts.
Right.
On number six, you want to just add wind to that, to the solar? Oh, number five, I guess it is, yeah.
Sure. Solar and wind projects.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I guess, yeah, uh. Gary, can you add that for the?
I'm sorry, I'm thinking about it. I, I had, yeah, that came to my head.
So. Okay.
Entrepreneurial mind just went somewhere, that's all I just.
That's cool. Um, yeah, basically, y- yeah, it's asking the town to serve essentially as the, the party or, let's get it said, the intervenor. Um.
Was it a public hearing as initial step?
Yeah, Gary, of course, if anything looks, you know. Dubious, please flag, but I don't know. When I was reading it, I was like, this seems pretty reasonable. Essentially just making the town more engaged in the process rather than leaving it solely to the CSC.
What happened when East Lime was gonna participate in that solar program that offered uh cost savings because of bulk installation? On home rooftops. Does anybody remember that?
I have no idea.
Solarize East Lime Campaign.
Yes.
Yes. I, yeah, I was involved with that.
Was it successful?
I think so. I mean, the, the state doled out a bunch of money to these companies to install solar at a reduced rate. Yeah, yeah, a number of. You know, residents bought into it. Um, I actually looked into it, but. At the time, I was in a different residence and in order to actually, actually turn any profit, we'd have to have the solar installed. I think it was something like seven. To eight years on that home before I'd actually see a return and. Ironically, we moved in less than that time, so uh I, I did install recently solar on this residence. Um, that there was, you know, the difference being there was no cost to me.
Yeah.
I, I think, you know, if you were willing to absorb the cost at that time, um, you got the tax credits. Where here, by going with the lease, you know, you're just giving those tax credits up, so, you know, it worked and it's just a large home. Uh, so it's, it's kind of a, it was, I think overall it was successful, but, you know, it really was kind of circumstantial too, because like I said, it's. Based on your, your, you know, where you are financially and. How long is it gonna take you to get a return? Are you willing to invest? I mean, that was kind of the issue with it, so. Um, I, I wish there was a, you know, the program was less cost to the homeowner, but if there wasn't. I mean, it was actually, it was reduced as if, if the program wasn't in place, the homeowners would have been paying top dollar for these installs, so. Uh, from that perspective, it was successful. I know there was a couple of towns throughout the state that had substantial, they had like two hundred plus residents just install solar, so. It was kind of crazy. Um, but those were in the high, more highly populated areas because obviously those installers are buying in super bulk.
Yeah.
So.
Got it.
Anyway, um.
Oh, yeah, I mean, this is basically just preventing like erosion, sedimentation and other impacts, and that's, that's about it. Developer responsible for damage and rete- and repair, which is the town's right. Next one, create a public awareness campaign on renewable energy incentives such as those available for residential solar panel installation, like Gary was just talking about. Um, oh, that should be create rather than created. Create a public awareness campaign on energy efficiency, you know, light bulbs, et cetera. Involve the first selectmen in the Climate Mayors Program. Require new municipal residential developments and commercial buildings to place all electrical transmission wiring underground. This was something that, oh my gosh. Somebody said in one of our first meetings, Peter Lynch. Which I think is an interesting proposition.
I like it.
I like it a lot, and I think it's really smart, especially if we're thinking about storms and hurricanes and disruption to our energy supply. I think putting all of our transmission lines underground, it's gonna be a lot more expensive, but if a big developer or whoever wants to come in and. Use a lot of electricity, they can do it the right way.
We, uh, we, we require that with the new subdivisions as a requirement, so all, it can come off the arterial street or collector's street. Where there may be an overhead wire, but the, the new street, if they construct one, all the utilities have to be underground.
I agree with this, that recommendation generally, and I think it is a good idea. I just wonder if it's a clean energy item. I agree. I think it's a good idea. I just don't know if it goes here or somewhere else.
Yeah, I don't know where else we'd put it, though. I feel like this is probably the. Yeah, I don't know where else we'd put it, though, I feel like this is probably the most.
I would certainly think it's a clean energy, it reduces your, your overhead costs, because you're not losing them during a hurricane, right? It's.
Fair.
I think there's a resiliency piece to it.
Just gonna say, let's add the word resiliency into this.
If you put it in.
Favorite word.
Resiliency, then you could put it in emergency management.
I put it up there in the title?
Oh.
That worked.
Need an extra I.
That's right.
About clean and reliable energy, because this is services we want to provide.
Yeah, I like that, I like that a lot, clean and reliable energy, great. And then the final one, actively pursue grant funding for renewable energy projects and microgrid development. Grant funding opportunities, there's a whole slew of them, and, um, then.
Do you want to squeeze in the grant writer into that one?
Yes.
Yeah, on 12, let's add a sentence about the grant writer and.
Yes, remember that grant writer.
Trying to think what else we could squeeze, how about art? Can we, can we add any? Oh, you said public awareness campaign.
Well, now there's a challenge, now we can get some artists, right? And, and then we can get, like, very artistic solar panels.
Yeah, I.
They have those flower, those flower solars that.
I honestly, it sounds crazy, but I think you might be on to something, if we had like a solar-powered art installation, no, I'm serious, either in the town square downtown, or like solar-powered lamps on the boardwalk, and have them with an interesting design, I think.
That would be fun, I think that'd be really cool.
And it would, it would.
Educate people too.
Yeah, if you make it interesting and artistic, then, then.
What is that called? Is that a new genre of art, Kirk?
I think we could come up with something, an acronym for it.
I don't know.
Something like, something that rhymes with P O C D.
Man, we're, we're getting tired.
Oh my gosh.
Okay, grant, actively pursue grant funding for renewable energy projects and microgrid development, including, or just say something like, the hiring of a town grant writer will facilitate this process, I don't know. Could do this, could fulfill this role, and also explore, um, could fill this role, I don't know, and also explore ways, uh, art and energy could be intertwined, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's a good, a good way to put it.
Do you want to put the art near the, well, you know what, no, it's fine.
Public art, I guess, and.
Sure.
How about, um, the hiring of a town grant writer could fulfill this role, and also explore ways that public art, um,
Could illustrate.
can advance energy education.
There you go.
Nice, that's good.
Perfect.
Perfect.
So we can get rid of that word.
Get rid of that, including.
Start at the.
Yes, the hiring. And then the extra energy at the end can be deleted as well. There it is. All right, then grant funding, so we can just fly through this next part, you can just.
Here it is, okay.
And then the next one is just strategies for implementation, these are all case studies that my students developed, or, you know, recorded, and then the last one is the Mass Highway Right-of-Way Solar Project, eight sites, 4.3 megawatts for 875 homes, and then, yes, key stakeholder groups, Town of Eastlime Natural Resource Commission, and new Clean Energy Task Force.
I've been taking these out because they weren't in every section, and as a time-saving measure, um,
Sure.
I just deleted them. Sorry.
Did you take these, Michelle, if you delete them, and put them on a separate piece, so I can?
Well, I think, I think we should include our.
This is on the matrix.
Go where?
That, we, if, if these two, maybe add the clean energy guide to the stakeholder, you know, proposed clean energy task force.
Yeah. Yeah, I just haven't been identifying key stakeholder groups in each section. Very few people included that when they sent in their sections.
Okay.
So it's easier to take two out than to add 10 in.
I, I agree.
I, I thought you were talking about all these case studies, if we wanted.
No.
No, keep them.
Leave them, yeah.
Just the bulletted thing at the bottom.
References.
Yeah, this is a disaster.
You gotta keep all these?
No.
So you can.
Some, no.
No, I can delete them?
Do we need some, do you, do you want them, does the, does he have a guide that we could include in?
Oh my god, they could afford you.
Yeah, remember, I'm an academic, like, come on.
So are you comfortable, Rosemary, in?
I can prune these, yeah.
Like, five?
Must include 500 citations, just kidding, okay, great, we're done with this.
Okay. So, I don't know, I don't, whatever you think is the most important references, if we need to reference, like, yeah, seriously, we'll reference them, but if you think we can delete them all, we can delete them all, so.
I'll go over these.
Okay.
At a time when it's not so painful for everyone.
Yeah, nice work on that.
Okay, so, do you want to go through those other sections? Michelle, you look like you're ready to kind of call it quits.
Um, I would like everyone to review them, but I don't necessarily think that we need to review them together.
Okay, sure.
I'm gonna read it, for sure.
So could you just make a note when you've read it, like, insert a comment or something, and then, then we'll know?
Intro, and what's the other one?
It's chapter two and chapter now 19.
Oh, the education outreach.
Yes, so it's chapter two, background, and, uh, chapter 18, education and outreach. Now, um, originally, we talked about, you know, like, an implementation-type chapter, but that was not coming together, so it's addressed in education and outreach. I think we keep, we're ending up with a document that I think does achieve the vision that we set out to, did we hit every note that we tried to? No, as a result of the timeline mostly, and that's just the situation we're in, I think.
I think it's pretty close, though.
Really good, though.
I think it's really good, I feel really.
Yeah, I.
Really good about it.
Going forward, I mean, if, you know, if we're so inclined, or at least at the planning commission is, is, we can continue to discuss the document and refine it, and just massage it even more. I mean, certainly.
In education and outreach, where I suggest that, per Kirk's earlier suggestion, that this become a standing item at all future planning commission, you know, regular agenda item, to check in on, uh, you know, if any changes need to be made, but also how we are moving forward the implementation of the plan. So there's no implementation-specific next steps or strategies, except that it recommends that the planning commission own it and be in charge of its implementation in terms of outreach to other groups that are needed.
Got you, cool.
I think that's good.
I'm gonna, either, we, we, in our next meeting, I think we should take a motion to add it to our agenda.
Well, we need to add it to our agenda for August 4th anyway, because we have to vote to send it.
We have to vote, yeah, exactly, so, I think, I think that'll be a good reminder to put it on the thing.
Yeah.
Help me remember that, somebody.
All right.
Is it, did I hear a motion, Kirk?
I, so moved. Yeah, for sure. Second. Oh, we don't know people to vote on anything, anyway.
Yeah, because Norm and I aren't real members of planning committee, just this.
Are, are you looking for the motion to adjourn?
No, this is a motion to forward, this is to the planning commission.
We're like, what are we doing?
Oh, oh, yes, to forward it to the planning commission for August 4th, absolutely, I second that motion.
I would second that motion.
You, you, you made that motion, Michelle seconded it, all in favor.
We're in favor, Norm and I.
Hi.
Everyone, okay, so August 4th goes to them, and then, okay.
Good job, everybody.
Yeah, nice work, I.
Thank you, Michelle, thank you, Gary.
Yeah, good job.
Oh, thank you, you guys were, I mean, truth be told, you guys like carried the bulk of this, I, I, you did, so, I am forever grateful, so thank you very much. Norm, thank you for your help and input, valuable. Rich, unfortunately, he's offline, can't thank him, I'll thank him offline, I'll let him know also to put a note or contact you, Michelle, that he's read that.
Great.
Such things. I think, is that it?
Tomorrow, Gary.
Yeah, you and I will get together on municipal finance.
Yep.
And it's in there now, so go for it.
Okay. Anything else?
Jen has proofed much of it, we gotta write the introduction.
Figures, all of these things.
Yeah, so, I think where we landed on that is, after tomorrow, hopefully, the wording is mostly done everywhere, I combine it into one document, so we have, like, the pages and things like that.
It will form it.
And then Jen will go through and just.
Pactination.
I have a recommendation for figures, I would just do it by section, I would just do it figure, so if it's like, clean energy 13, 13.1, that's why we do it for academic papers, and it just makes it a lot easier, because then you're not like, oh my god, figure 48, and then you know that automatically corresponds to that section, so that's, I think that's the easiest way to do it.
Great.
Saves your life.
Yeah, good, good idea.
More like the figure with the.
With the section, with the section number. So 14.1, 14.2, 14.3, and 14 being like clean energy, or whatever.
All right. Maybe, I don't know, I guess as far as things like, I know we have plenty of time to worry about, like, cover pages and things like that, but do we have to put anything pretty on the front of this, or are we just gonna slap a town seal and leave it at that?
Do we have somebody who really enjoys doing art?
Well, Jen had mentioned her daughter, possibly, but I don't know.
If school were in session, I would say to the art teacher, have a contest with your art students, come up with a really cool logo, design, or something, but.
I don't know, if anybody had thoughts on that, but that, obviously, that can be down the road before we publish, but.
A photo contest.
I think that's a great idea.
Or many photos.
Yeah.
Okay.
Put something on the town website, why not? Submit your photos, I don't know.
I think we got enough to worry about.
I'm with Norm, I'm all for it if you guys want to do it, but I am not, I do not want to do it.
Delegating that to everybody else.
All right, credit us, thank you. Gives, gives me some direction.
So the town seal, then?
Yeah, that sounds good.
I'm gonna come up with something creative, I don't know.
A seashell.
Yeah, seashell is good.
All right, otherwise, I guess we need a motion to adjourn if we're good.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
Good night. Bye, thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, talk to you tomorrow, Kirk and Michelle.
Yep, have a good one.
Thanks.